Good evening. This meeting for the Winthrop Town Council for November 18th, 2014 is now called order. Just to notice that this meeting is being recorded and may be televised live. Pledge of Allegiance, would you all please stand?
Yes. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counselor Clark Denise, call the role. This is the council role.
Counselor Callow, present. Counselor Sanford.
Here.
Counselor Van Cury.
Here.
Counselor Vrom.
Here.
Counselor Terry.
Here.
Counselor Wayagen.
Here.
Counselor Mayo.
Vice President Dovento.
Present.
President Gill.
Present.
Thank you.
Tonight, we are starting the council meeting and then moving into a joint meeting with the school committee and the town council. And you're probably going to be tired of hearing the roll called over and over again tonight. So I would like to, if there's no objection from the council, to recess and move on to an open meeting of the joint meeting of the town council and the school committee. If there's no objection, we'll move on. And we are now commencing the meeting for November 18th, the special meeting, joint meeting of the school committee and the town council. Counselor Clark Denise.
Counselor Callow, present. Counselor Sanford.
Here.
Counselor Van Cury.
Here.
Counselor Vrom.
Here.
Counselor Terry.
Here.
Counselor Wayagen.
Here.
Counselor Mayo.
Vice President Dovento.
Yep.
Counselor President Gill.
Yes.
Okay. Mary Ellen Sharkey.
Yes.
Melissa Polino. William Holden. Peter Gill.
Yes.
Brian Perrin.
Here.
Gary Scormo.
Here.
Thank you.
The quorum is present. So the purpose of this meeting is to appoint a member to fill the vacancy on the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational Technical School Committee. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Dawn Armstead and Christopher Bolster. I guess Bolster's off the field. Dawn and Christopher have each sent in their resumes to the council. And I'm going to ask them if they have anything to say, but first I'm going to read the policy. The policy of this appointment is a little bit different than some of the other appointments that we make. So just for clarification, I'm going to read the school committee policy from the Northeast Metropolitan Regional School. If there is a failure to elect or a vacancy occurs among the members elected by the district, the local school committee and the members of the city council, we're a city form of government, so we're considered a city council, from the city involved, that's Winthrop and Winthrop, shall jointly appoint a member to serve. The appointee filling such vacancies shall serve until the next biennial election, at which election a successor shall be selected to serve for the balance of the unexpired term. So in other words, whoever is appointed tonight, the term will start January 1st because that's when Ms. Bolster's resignation takes place. And it will run through the next regular election, at which point the position will be open to run. So when one of you gets appointed, if you decide you want to, stay on, make sure you remember to run. So although her term doesn't expire until 2017, it's still determined by the next regular state election. Okay, so I introduce Dawn and Christopher. Does anybody from the council have any questions or comments for Dawn or Christopher?
I'd just like to hear both of them.
Yeah, okay. Dawn, do you want to just?
My name's Dawn Armstead. Currently, right now, I'm a school resource juvenile detective with the Metropolitan School System. And thank you, Mary. I've been there for a year now. I wear many hats being in the school, and I take an interest in the children, the community, the students, as well as at the vocational school. I've been part of the meetings there for the past year, the CDJ meetings, community-based juvenile meetings, security meetings, with the 12 different districts that are represented up there at the vocational schools. So I've networked, I've met some chiefs of police, attend these meetings, detectives of other communities, the superintendent of the schools, the dean of students, any issues that arise in Winthrop, I bring back here and mediate between our town and the vocational school, any issues that arise. And I have an open door policy, as well as they call me anytime they have an issue with a student up there as well.
Thank you. Christopher?
Hello. Those who don't know me, Christopher Bolster. My family's been a business in town since '55. Some of you may know some of them. I'm an alumni at the school. I graduated 2011. My interest in this is mainly to protect my school and protect my town, because obviously there's 66 kids there now from Winthrop. And obviously, roughly $12,000 a kid that Winthrop pays out. You want to make sure you get the best education you can for that money. And I mean, I've been through the school, I've seen where it can improve, where it shouldn't be putting money. I've attended several meetings. My aunt is the current chairperson now, who put in her resignation. And so if I ever need to pick her brain, I always can, which is a big plus, I think. And I'd say I just want to protect my town, protect my school.
Thank you, Christopher. Okay, on the agenda then, the format of the motion is that we move that the Winthrop Town Council and Winthrop School Committee, acting jointly, appoint a name to fill a vacancy on the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational School Committee. Said term shall commence January 1st, 2015, and continue till the next biennial election or take any other action relative thereto. But I have a motion.
Make a motion that we appoint Dawn Armstead to the position.
Motion from Chairman Scormo that we appoint Dawn Armstead to the position. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Callow. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I have to disclose through the Ethics Commission that I have appearance of conflict as a result of Dawn Armstead working for the Police Department.
Okay, so you abstained.
I have filed a disclosure with the town clerk's office.
Did they vote you should abstain from the vote, that you can vote?
I spoke to the school committee council, Paul Modnet, today, and he advised that I just file that.
Okay, but you can vote?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor say aye.
I'm sorry, sir. Could I speak?
Yes.
I would like to say both candidates. It is not an easy thing to put your name forward for any election, whether it's a town election or a committee election. You put yourself out there, and I really appreciate both Ms. Armstead and Mr. Bolster for doing that and for their obvious display of being willing to serve the town.
As do I. As Gary said, it's a courageous thing you've done, and I appreciate your desire to do this, both of you. And it's a difficult decision because you're both very well qualified in both different types of qualifications, and I respect you both applying. Is there any further discussion?
I would just like to say somewhat of the same thing. We need the young people, and we need young people to step forward. And I thank both of you for doing that. And whoever gets the position today, I hope that the other person will step forward. There are many positions that will be open in the next year or two, so I ask of both of you to really consider thinking of maybe looking into it and putting your name on some spot that we can vote for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, and I will read it again. Sorry. That the Winthrop Town Council and the Winthrop School Committee, acting jointly, appoint Dawn Armstead to fill a vacancy on the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational School Committee. Said term to commence January 1st, 2015, and continue until the next biennial state election. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Christopher. Thank you, Dawn. Christopher? Hang in there, we need you. We need you, young guys. You guys, you're welcome to stay, but you don't have to. Would the transcript like to do a picture? You don't have a camera. Okay. Okay. Very good.
Do you want to?
I'm going to adjourn the joint meeting now. Oh, Terry, do you want to?
If you want to take a photo, I can ship it.
Okay.
Send it over.
You want to school committee to come up?
Use Gary.
All right, Gary and I will do it.
Yeah. Town election's next year, Chris.
Don't speak.
Before the school committee, which will lead.
Congratulations.
But I have a motion to adjourn the joint meeting of this.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion. Motion by Chairman Scormo, seconded by Counselor Van Cury. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, moving on. Mr. McKenna.
Yes. Good evening. I, oh, I'm sorry. I am very excited about our next presentation. As you know, many of you participated in a number of meetings held. Let me drop back for a minute. This council, about a year or so ago, through several discussions, encouraged me to move forward with an economic development plan for the community. It was a big undertaking. We sought the services of the Collins Center, and they graciously stepped up and met with me and Joe Demolovitz and proposed a scope of work that we thought really would fit our needs. And consequently, Monica Lamboy joined us as their lead in helping the town to develop its economic development strategy, five-year plan. We had a number of meetings. I think it was very comprehensive. We involved the planning boards, we involved a number of other boards and committees in town. We had a task force specifically appointed for this effort. I know several of you, Russ Sanford and Craig Mayo, both participated actively in this group, as well as you, council president. We had a number of business owners involved and members of other committees and boards. And the results were proud to present tonight, which has been a level of effort that I think really is commendable by this community in recognizing, you know, the need to have a clear and very current plan of action for how to move this community forward to develop this economic base. We know that Winthrop is now being looked at under a new light of opportunity and advancement. You'll hear some impressive results, I think, that show this to be true when you meet with your board of assessors later on this evening. And so this is really a way, a roadmap forward for us to seize this momentum and move the community forward. And, you know, a lot of you have had input into this plan. I'm proud of the plan, and I'm proud to introduce Monica Lamboy, who will give us a brief presentation. Monica is a senior associate with the Collins Center at UMass Boston. She was the former community development director for the city of Somerville and also a land use planner in Oakland, California. She has a lot of experience in land use planning, economic development planning, and she's really brought a lot of credibility to our effort. And we're just really pleased with her results. And if you would, Monica, come up here and join me.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, council president, members of the council. I'm Monica Lamboy, senior associate with the Edward J. Collins Jr. Center for Public Management at UMass Boston. Thank you. This has been a great process. I really want to thank you for inviting us in to work with you. As you can see, it was very collaborative. We've had help all along the way from members of this board, residents of the community, and businesses in the community. So what I thought I would do is sort of give a couple-second overview of the process we followed to develop a five-year strategic plan for economic development, look at some of the data, only a little bit, a fraction of the data, and then move into the plan. So a strategic plan is an idea of looking at the information before you and figuring out how you can be best effective in accomplishing your goals. Sometimes it's things that you want to pursue, and part of it may be things that are just not available to pursue. So as we look at the data, we were looking at what is unique about Winthrop, where does it stand within the region, what are some wonderful aspects of the community here that could be offered to really grow the economy. We met with a steering committee, a large group. They met for many, many hours, and we had extra meetings than were originally planned, so I appreciate the participation. There was a community meeting in June, and we followed that up with a survey of the proposals and finally put together the plan that's before you. So looking at the numbers, just a few of the findings. One of the findings we made early on was that the residential population of the town has declined. It's not unusual that post-World War II, some of our more central communities declined in population. Why that applies to economic development is that there's buying power in the resident community, particularly in a community where the retailers rely very heavily on local shoppers. The reduction in buying power actually is substantial. Our next finding, the next one that's on this report, as you know, Winthrop has a really great location, and a lot of residents use transportation, use public transit to get to work on a daily basis, above the state average, and really rivaling some of the transit-rich communities in the area such as Cambridge and Brookline. So it's really testimony to the fact that the Blue Line station is not that far away, and people value the short commute that's offered by the public transit. On a more somber note, our finding number seven is that since 1990, Winthrop has lost over 40% of its jobs, a net loss of 1,100 jobs, which is very, very substantial figure in its counter-trend to the other communities that we compared to. We used Beverly, Chelsea, Hull, Revere, Salem, and Swansgate. And so really, Winthrop was the only one that had such a downward change. Most of the communities post the economic downturn were in a growth mode over this time period. As a result, or perhaps, Winthrop compared to the comparison communities has the second fewest total numbers of jobs. Only Hull, of the ones that we looked at, had fewer jobs than Winthrop did. Where that becomes significant is the next slide, two further actually. Looking at the number of jobs per resident in the workforce, and this one I really would like to spend a little bit of time on. The data shows that there are fewer than .2 jobs per resident in the workforce. So that has a lot of implications. First of all, your residential population has to travel elsewhere to go to work, and many of us have long commutes, so we'd like to have shorter commutes, and that's not that available to people that live here. It also has a very significant impact on your retailers, your restaurants, because there's such an outflux of population each day during the week that the population of the town falls dramatically during the business day. It's assuming that most people are working their standard nine-to-five job. So there aren't people going to lunch, maybe going to the grocery store, going to the drugstore. So it does have a real influence on the vitality of the businesses and their ability to make an income during the standard part of the day. So at .2 jobs, it's very significantly different. Cities like Beverly have almost a one-to-one, Boston, I believe, has greater than one-to-one, so all these people are coming in to the town, into Boston, Cambridge, spending money during the day. So that's a really significant issue. Next finding. No surprise, you know this, but Winthrop's economy is dominated by very small businesses. 84% of business establishments, according to the data, have under 10 employees. Those that were larger, on the data, I think it's from 2012 or 2013, we're not even sure if they are, all of them are still in existence. And some of that has to do with the way the data source is reported. So very, very small businesses, quite a few, but they're tiny. Next finding. It's not surprising that a large amount of the retail spending of residents is done outside of town. So the equivalent of 68% of the residential buying power is leaving the borders of Winthrop to meet their needs. Now, that's, some people are coming in to shop, some people are going out, but the net influence of that is that there are over $204 million of sales by residents that are happening outside the borders of the city.
And that's an annual number?
That's an annual number for 2014. On the slide is a few of the subcategories. General merchandise, $36 million outside. Food and beverage stores, $31 million. Motor vehicles, food, drinking, $19 million. So we're talking some very large numbers.
So on that point, if I could, even though we see a resurgence in the restaurant industry, for example, in Winthrop, we still have a significant amount of catch-up to make here, to our capacity at least, that can be still mined, if you will.
Yes. Yes. And I'll follow up that in two slides, we'll get back there. There are a few sectors where there was more spending, more spending in town. Household appliances and repairs, more happening within town than the resident population. Hardware stores, so people are coming in to go to the two hardware stores. And pharmacy and drug, people are coming into town. So people know where you are, and they can get here for some of these things. But on the next slide, opportunity sectors, food and drinking. As Jim was saying, there are many millions of dollars of spending on food and drinking that are happening outside of town that could be coming into town, despite the fact that you've had really great restaurants, they're known, there is more money to be had, I would guess I would say.
Or recaptured.
To be captured in this area. And a lot of what you see, communities organizing retail around are sort of experiential, going to great dining, or great culture, or whatever it might be, will bring people into a community, and then hopefully they'll walk down the street and spend some more money. So this is a real opportunity area. Some other opportunity sectors on a relatively small scale, beer, wine, and liquor, jewelry, sporting goods, office supplies, actually, there's more spending outside of town than in town. Enough on that. Starting to look at the land and how land is used. What we found using assessor's data is the single largest commercial land use was clubs and lodges, by a pretty large margin. So great activities, lodges and clubs, but most of those are not.
Is that skewed a little bit because of the golf course? Is that?
I, the golf course is, yes. The golf course is the single largest land use in town, followed by retail, mixed juice, et cetera. What we also found is that most of the commercial buildings were very low in scale, two stories or less, and large amounts of land were being used for parking. So this is sort of planner graffiti, where I sort of just colored in a parking lot. And if you look at the aerial, how much is actually building versus how much is parking in a community that has limited land, the utilization of land for parking does have a direct impact on how much building space you have on a property that can be used to generate income, to generate activity. So, yeah.
So we have an abundance of parking in that particular area, you would suggest?
I might suggest that, yes.
Poorly utilized land for parking.
Well, we could talk about parking. I know it's a very, very, it usually brings out a lot of passions, but what people are realizing is if you can get multiple users of the same space as opposed to single-purpose parking, that resource is much more valuable because it can be used for a lot of different people during the course of the day. So lots that are for a single purpose only aren't as effective as.
So our land use has been driven by vehicles, our policy has been driven by vehicle needs as opposed to commercial retail space?
I don't want to say that, but I can say, out in the environment today, if you look at it from above, from the aerial, you will find relatively small commercial uses oftentimes surrounded by a lot of parking. So then it's a public policy question about where's that right balance between those two functions?
Don't you also put forth the fact that it was your estimation that Winthrop had a very low mobility? Was that something that your group came up with in terms of people walking and utilizing? I think I heard that in your talk.
What you'll see in the actions, it is such a nice, compact community that walking seems to be, and bicycling seems to be a kind of a no-brainer for how local folks could get to the business. We didn't have a data source that would speak to how many people were walking, although, you know, one can do pedestrian counts and bicycle counts, but we didn't have that data.
I just thought in many of your, one of your meetings, I had heard something relating to that. Maybe it was in one of your solutions. Okay? No?
Perhaps very important to the folks in this room and the community at large is that, at the end of the day, commercial property generates very little of the tax base of this community. I see a lot of heads nodding. The lion's share of the resources are generated from the residential property holders and very little from the commercial. Very different from Everett, which has over 60% of its commercial tax base from commercial. Chelsea, Cambridge, there's a few out there that have figured out how to shift this balance. And right now, Winthrop, I think, is, Winthrop and Hull are the two lowest of the ones. In terms of your ability to offer services to the community, this also influences it. Of the communities that we studied, Winthrop had the lowest per capita revenues, public revenues, to meet your basic needs, your public safety, your education needs. Other communities had property taxes and then had a greater share of state aid. So between state aid and property taxes combined, of the comparison communities, Winthrop just had over $2,000 of revenue per resident. So with those findings, we moved as a group in the steering committee to talk about strengths and weaknesses, opportunities and threats. A lot of wonderful strengths here. The environment here is beautiful, the proximity to the airport, the ability to get to downtown Boston incredibly fast is here. It's a safe community, there's a lot of pride in the community, you have transportation nearby, great historical resources, culture is incredibly strong. I'm speaking to the choir. Weaknesses and challenges, the transit's here, but it's still a little bit difficult to get to. The shuttle was one of my pet peeves, the bus, a bit challenging to make that work. Just can't get there from here. The airport has a downside, as we know, in terms of noise, in terms of odors, et cetera. Housing for young families actually came up, for young families and young adults came up in the group as an area where there's not that many opportunities. And the small commercial parcels being really challenging to develop. Opportunities is the ferry service coming in, tourism, hospitality, which runs deep in the community for many centuries, actually, and just the real efforts that the community has put in to grow the economy. Okay. So moving on to the plan itself. Just can't get there from here. The airport has a downside, as we know, in terms of noise, in terms of odors, et cetera. Housing for young families actually came up, for young families and young adults came up in the group as an area where there's not that many opportunities. And the small commercial parcels being really challenging to develop. Opportunities is the ferry service coming in, tourism hospitality, which runs deep in the community for many centuries, actually, and just the real efforts that the community has put in to grow the economy. So moving on to the plan itself, the group came up with a vision, which is that Winthrop will be home to a vibrant business community that is uniquely its own. Walkable, attractive, commercial districts with a mix of shops, restaurants, and services will draw residents and visitors of all ages into Winthrop throughout the week, during the day, and into the evening. Visitors will enjoy Winthrop's unique environment, including its beaches, harbors, marsh, and historic neighborhoods, before stopping by local shops and restaurants. Businesses will be readily accessed by a variety of transportation modes, including public transit, walking, bicycling, and driving, and an array of jobs will be found in town that offer good wages and benefits, and take advantage of the many talents that Winthrop residents offer. And that underlied everything else that we developed during the plan. So strategies that we saw, these are real areas to focus, using the tremendous natural environment here to bring visitors into town. There are many things that you have here that lots of other people don't have access to. The marsh is phenomenal, the beaches are wonderful, but they need to be able to get here. So that's why accessibility is the second highest issue. As we were talking, a lot more people are bicycling, are walking, are taking public transit. There's a real sea change out there. So how can Winthrop get on that and use that to its advantage to bring people in easily? Create a strong town center and commercial, waterfront commercial districts, increase the number of local jobs, promote Winthrop as a great place to raise a family, as you all know, and increase targeted regional marketing. So those are our strategic themes. The next two slides, we have a lot of goals, I'm not going to read all of them. Using the unique environment again to bring people in. Transportation is our second town center. We have actions around neighborhood commercial centers, around quality jobs. Expanding the customer base, this could be a local-first type of initiative, or just encouraging people to shop local. Creating housing opportunities, a lot of businesses that are coming to understand how housing growth and housing development can benefit them, whether it might be shop, people living above that can come down and grab a bite to eat, or whatever it might be. Leveraging the unique arts, culture, history. We touched relatively quickly on climate change, because that can influence businesses' ability to thrive. And the last one is about financial self-determination for the local government itself. Moving on, overall, we've given you all a lot of work to do, sorry. A total of 126 unique actions are included in the plan. You will see sometimes that actions are duplicated where they apply in more than one area, and so it will say link to such-and-such, which is the partner. Over the five years of the plan, quite a few actions in year one, two, three, four, and five, really to sort of finish up what's been started, and in year five, hopefully to start another five-year plan. And we broke them down into subcategories of business development, planning, zoning, and permitting, public safety, et cetera. Overall, in the early years, some of the actions have to do with getting groups of people together to work on various issues. Recommendation for a bicycle committee, perhaps a sustainability committee, to start bringing residents and maybe businesses together around those areas. And some relatively low-hanging fruit for some of the zoning changes. Years two and three, recommending some more substantial zoning kinds of things in a comprehensive plan. One huge challenge that communities face all over is getting a unified sense of goal for the community, because when developers put money into drawings and time to come together, and then end up in a public forum where there's not consensus, or there's a lot of disagreement, time is money for them. So engaging in that conversation in year two and year three, so that there's a real, you know, sense of, let's go do this, this is what we want to do as a community. And then the marketing types of actions on general come a little bit later, because we're recommending that you want people to come when there's something really to show for your efforts. And you've had some good successes in the farmer's market as well, which I know are already bringing people into town. So I didn't want to belabor all of the actual actions, but I'm very happy to answer any questions you might have.
I was interested in one particular part, if, I don't know, if I forget, maybe it was a self-determination, or to bring people in here in regards to incentivizing businesses to come here, and I think it was giving them, I see it a lot with the New York now, is trying to attract large amounts of business by giving them a temporary tax break while they're getting started and things like that. Was that something that, maybe I misread what was in the larger plan, but-
We have, now, the town of Winthrop never had that tool in its toolbox until last year, when we made application to stretch the Chelsea and Revere Economic Target Area designation to Winthrop. And we did that. We had to get that approved by the governor, actually. And now that that designation sits as an overlay over Winthrop, we can explore on a project basis what might be a project that the state Mass Office of Business Development would sanction for a, what they call a tax income financing TIF opportunity, which would be an engagement with this council in terms of a structured financing arrangement, which would be potentially a relief for, at some level, up to five percent of property tax. Plus, they would get a kicker from the state of a tax credit of five percent. So it's a 10 percent ultimate tax benefit that gets added back to their stream, financing stream, for redevelopment or project development purposes. And 10 percent financing of a project, if they only want to put in 20, and they need another 10 to get their 70 percent commercial loan, that's a big piece. So it becomes very valuable, that now we can offer as an incentive.
It's really important to have that in your toolkit. Some other tools that we recommend contemplating is district improvement financing, which is basically where you create a boundary of an area where you want investment, and you commit to reinvest the growth in the property taxes back into that area, so that somebody that does come in will know that there's a commitment to help that area get improved, whether it's street improvements, lighting, other types of infrastructure. So that's also a recommendation for exploring that as well.
Other questions?
I guess to Jim, where do you see things going based on the plan? Sorry, Ross.
No, well, I think, you know, this is a great, you know, and comprehensive point that we've reached here. I think what we need to do is explore how to carve out some of these, you know, these tasks and how to implement it. I think that's the key, is to put an action plan together that's driven by, you know, a group, a task force in the community that would continue to, you know, carry this forward, and to put resources behind it. I think we need to figure out, you know, what our appetite is to take on these challenges, and to design a plan that puts staffing and resources, and, you know, combine that with a task force through the council, that, you know, sees this as one of its charges, and holds us accountable to get it done.
Yes, Council.
First of all, thank you, Jim, thank you for all your con, the Collins Center. You know, this is something we haven't had, you know, for years, we've always talked again and thought of master plan. Some of the things have been accomplished with just this booklet, the Business Permit Handbook, and some of the changes that the council has made along the way. And we're seeing some of the benefits of that, we're going to see going forward. I think some of the things, again, we have to look at is, you know, year one, two, and three, as we go forward. We do have lots of resources, we have lots of reasons for people to come to town. We just have to learn and start a campaign, a marketing campaign about what, you know, some of the things we, you know, brought into town relative to human resources and different, people at different positions, that paid off tremendously. Facilities manager, and I see it as Craig would call it. Craig, what's the term used for bringing someone into town to market? A cruise director, so to speak? But someone who actually be here, you know, with, it's working with the planning, you know, aspect of the town, as well as the marketing aspect of the town. And I think that's something we have to look at funding as we go forward. And I think, I thank the Collins Center and town manager for leading the charge on it. We have made a lot of great changes, and there's a lot of room for more benefits as we go forward. And again, I have to thank the chamber along with that, who worked in and here with the Collins Center, with the town manager.
I wanted to thank you, Mr. McKenna, for your vision to get this going, and Monica to come in and help us. And I know that you're committed to not let this sit on the shelf, as we've seen from things in the past. Russ, as he said, Council Sanford and the chamber have had some good focus on this, and we just want to make sure that this momentum gets going, and that it doesn't sit on the shelf, because it's very, very, it's been so far a comprehensive and cooperative effort that needs to continue on.
You know, on that point, I can't say enough about the Collins Center. They've been a great ally of this community. I think that we forged a unique relationship with the center. And I can't underscore enough, you know, the fact that, you know, they have been in the front seat with us all the way through, and we hope in the future as well, as we continue to tackle these objectives. Many of you have, you know, weighed in on these issues, and have had good input here. I think it's incumbent upon me to respond to this plan and propose, you know, a first step, where do we go now, kind of concept, and put some, you know, thought into that, and perhaps suggest recommendations on funding, to see how we can move on this stuff. Because I know you're as excited as I am, and we all want to get this going. We want to seize on the momentum that we've started. And, you know, I think a lot of this also has encouraged private investment and private, you know, encouragement to see the value in what's going on. And so we're already getting, I think, from our exercise, and I know some of those folks participated in this, and I think that, you know, was sort of undergirding of their reactions and willingness now to take a strong look at Winthrop and invest in Winthrop. That's where really the success is going to be. It's not in what we do, it's in the investment that has to be made in Winthrop. You know, whether it's private funding, or, you know, state funding and other resources. So, you know, it's going to take a collaboration to do all of this, but, you know, this is a great first start, and it's a great summation of where we stand today, and we have a lot to do.
And I think one of the places, you know, that this booklet that you came up with tonight, when the person comes into your business in town, here's the book. But I also think that we're sitting on some big private investment in town between the hospital and the temple, and the dental school. And I credit a lot of that to the fact that the boards have kind of cooperated and made these things happen. They haven't made them happen haphazardly, we've seen some, a couple of stumbling blocks, but we're seeing some real movement. Now that that's moving, and this is moving, and this whole process, this whole plan, I think is a real big plus for the town. Any further comments? That's you, by President Deventer.
Yeah, the only thing I can say is, it's great to have some, we talk and we talk and we talk, and finally have something, right? I'm assuming we're going to have it on the website within the day, I saw it's not already there. And the one thing that you'll notice if you go towards the end, there are dozens, literally dozens of recommendations. And I think the people need to take a look at them, which, you know, some are minor, some are very simple, and some are very complex, but there are a lot of ideas, a lot of, you know, they're called action plans, that are here. Not all of them are going to, I mean, I'm sure we're not all going to agree on all of them, but it's something to start with. And we'd like people to take a look at it, especially, not just the chamber, the chamber of business people, but also the residents, to see, to get, to get some feedback back as to, you know, what direction we want to go. We have finally something in writing, finally something with some guidance, finally data to back it up, and, you know, a lot of talking over a lot of years has got us to a point that you can actually start looking at doing things, and see which way you really want to go, and break these, but the townspeople, and really take a look and start, you know, instead of sitting back, look at them, see if there are things that you may like and may not like, and either become an advocate, or if there are issues, you know, voice them so that we can start looking at why they're an issue, and maybe, you know, tweak a movement in directions to go somewhere. But we finally have a plan, somewhere to go, some things to look at, things to do, that actually have detail to them, and the best thing is we have data, and we're, and professional expertise to back up the plan, so.
Yes, Council Mayor.
I think our cards are played. There's only one thing we can do. We have a deadline of getting the ferry off the ground in the most successful way. I know there are some things you can do, you know, on the side, and there's some things that are in the plan that we're already working on, but, you know, that's the big, that's the big job I see in the horizon. 2015, somewhere along the line, that boat's going to show up, and it's going to be, hey, boys and girls, what are we going to do? How are we going to get people here? How are we going to get people there? Take everybody to, you know, I mean, and we're going to have to make a serious, you know, stab at it, you know? It's not a $5,000, $10,000 operation. We got, we have to make it work, we have to put our best effort into it, and that includes having a good, solid plan. So I would think by, geez, first of February, we'd be ready to go with an operational plan, gives you the time through the holidays to be thinking, collecting information, and then start to vet this out.
We have to have something that can come too. Any further, yes, Council?
I think the whole plan is wonderful, and reading the goals and subgoals, the implementation things that we're going to do are all fantastic. The key thing we got to start doing is getting the townspeople and their taxpayers to buy into it, so that they stay in Winthrop, and we stop this leakage. There's this leakage that we're losing $200 million that are going out every year, should be staying in Winthrop, and we need to sell it to our own people, instead of just thinking about bringing in the outside people. We have to start selling it to our taxpayers, our town residents.
I think that's a good point. When you go to the restaurants in town that are all successful, you don't know anybody, which means we're importing money, but we need our own people to get on board.
We do have a lot of creative and talented people in Winthrop, and a lot of people have
stepped forward, and have opened up their businesses, do have ideas of development. And I think now's a good time, if we are going to create some kind of financial support, that people who are out there that have been thinking for maybe a long time, gee, I'd like to open up a little art studio, or I'd like to open up a little store, or I'd like to, you know, develop my piece of land here, now's the time for them to step forward. Come to us so we can try to help them. And I want to thank all the ones that have already done that. We are so blessed with people that really believe in the town of Winthrop. And I just hope it just keeps moving forward from here.
Thank you, Council. Any further comments from the council?
Thank you.
If not, excuse me. Again, thank you, Monica, Jim, Russ, and your economic development team, and the, everybody that was involved in the development of this plan, and let's stay on it and make it happen. Moving on, the minutes from November 5th has circulated. Motion by Council Sanford, seconded by Vice President Deventer.
I have to.
And Council Call will abstain. Is there any further, is there any discussion on the motion? Not all of the papers say aye. Aye, opposed, two nays. Okay, we have a whole bunch of, we have a whole series of public hearings, and I'm just going to run through them one at a time. And I will start by opening the public hearing to authorize, to authorize the lease purchase of the fire engine. And there is a motion that will be coming before us tonight, and the matter of this public hearing is that the town council authorized a seven-year lease slash purchase of a 1250 GPM pumping fire engine. Total amount to be authorized for this equipment is $533,000, I'll take any action relative there too. We'll open the hearing on this item, and ask if there's any comments from the public. If not, isn't any comment from the council? Miss President? Then you're going to hear the same comment on most of these, I think, on all these public counties. Finance committee did meet last night, and did recommend moving forward like this. Thank you. Any further comment? If not, the public, Tim?
Well, I could just comment. So we have some data on the seven-year lease arrangement. It's the annual payment of $82,106, and the interest rate is 2.59. So we're happy with that, and that's, if this passes, that will be the avenue that we take.
That's good, thank you. Any further comment on the public hearing? If not, that public hearing is closed, and we'll move on, and open the public hearing on the matter of the town council transferring $30,216 from free cash to supplement the MIES personnel line budget, 011-5551-551100, I'll take any- personnel line budget, 011-5551-551100, or take any action relative there too. On the hearing, is there anybody in the public that would like to comment? Anybody on the Council would like to comment? Mr. McCann?
Yes, this is to provide staff, the necessary staffing support for primarily MIS administrative functions. Our MIS has developed really into the, what I would consider, you know, the spinal column of the government. It is, everything touches MIS. We all, as we saw tonight, we all need experts, very quickly, to help us do the things we do. The more we become technology-bound and driven, we need help to manage that. And so, the organizational aspect of technology has grown, and it needs to have adequate administrative support underneath it, to take care of the things so that the people that we have can do the things that they should be doing, and not be laboring on things they ought not be doing. And I want the technologists to be doing technology and not be encumbered with things that can be better left to someone to handle at administrative clerical level. And so, it's time that we give this support to this department so that those items can be handled, as well as we have a couple of projects for this individual to perform, particularly in the area of records retention and our town records management strategies that we've discussed at the committee level. This person will be helping us with those as well.
So this is basically a staff person at the clerical level?
That's right. That's exactly right.
Council Vice President?
So, does the MIS department, you feel they're sufficiently trained to do what's needed, and is there a training budget for them?
There's more that can be done. We're growing dimensionally in MIS, and we need to do more. Just looking at the rollout of the iPads in the schools, you know, has required a very specific and dedicated resource in MIS for that. So, and more will come with that. But what we need to also recognize is that, as a department, it needs to have administrative capacity to handle the day-to-day things that, where, we don't want our technologists focused on those issues, you know, paying bills and answering phone calls and this and that, you know, the things that need to be attended to.
Are there any state oversight that can, I have no idea what I'm talking about, but like an audit of like what our current status is in MIS and where our needs might be, or things like that? Is there any type of?
That area always deserves, sort of, perhaps more than others, deserves a current and constant reevaluation, because things change all the time. So, you know, I expect that we'll be, John Lucero and I will be focusing on the state of understanding this, you know, better, particularly in our budget process as we move forward. But we've had discussions with the Department Head, given him some direction in terms of where we see our allocations of the staff time needs to be, also some ideas about where we see the town needing more attention and what hasn't been given enough attention. So we're doing a bit of an audit in terms of the hours allocation for that department, but a lot of it does depend on the technologists bringing to our attention where we can improve and how we need to do things differently. So it's a back-and-forth kind of process, but it's always something that needs, you know, quite a constant review and update.
Any further comment on this public hearing, on this item? Council?
Several years back, we had the consolidation, which MIS is a part of. Now, is this a shared expense with schools? Because like you mentioned, the iPads and how much tech.
At the moment, no. This is not a shared expense. This is something that I've determined is a need to be filled. As we go forward and do this audit of time, we'll determine with the schools how much resources need to be contributed to this. So it will be part of the whole analysis of how we parse out the contribution from both town and school side.
Any further comment? Not, that portion of that public hearing is closed, and we'll move on to the next public hearing, where the item is to, the Town Council transfer a six, Councilors, please. The Council transfer $676,534 from free cash to fund 932 Stabilization Fund, or take any action relative there too. Is there any question, comment on this item in the public hearings? From the public, from the Council? Council Deventer?
Miss President, the Council Finance Committee met on this, and this is in line with the free cash policy that we passed last year to fund the following three items, the stabilization fund, the three stabilization funds that are going to be coming up in public hearings. These are in line with the policy we established last year to fund those accounts.
Thank you. Tim or Jim, Mr. McCann or Mr. Gordon, did you want to comment on that at all?
Hi, nothing to add.
Okay, good. Any further comment on that item, on the item of the transfer to the stabilization fund? Not, I'll declare that hearing closed and move on to the next one, where the Council is being asked to transfer $977,046 from free cash fund 964 to capital stabilization fund for the purpose of funding the town's capital improvement needs, or take any action relative there too. Any comment from the public? Any comment from the Council? Council Vice President Deventer?
Same comment, the same comment on the next one, so I wanted to comment on the next one.
Okay. If there is no further comment, that public hearing is closed, and we move on to, that the Town Council transfer $150,000 from free cash to the Building Maintenance Stabilization Fund for the purpose of funding extraordinary unforeseen town facility maintenance expenditures, or take any action relative there too. Is there any comment from the public on that item? Any comment from the Council on that item? Any comment from Town Manager or CFO? If not, that public hearing is closed. Moving on to the fiscal year 15 Tax Classification Board of Assessors Program, our presentation. Alan Maruzzi, Chairman, do you want to?
Patrick Hemmings is going to present his presentation. I just want to thank him before we start, he did a very good job.
Sure was.
Glad to be able to speak here tonight on the African Board of Assessors, and mainly the classification hearing is a decision by the Council. So the purpose is to determine the allocation of the local property tax to be borne by the four classes of real property and personal property in the town. For fiscal year 2015, this is a revaluation of the town. The values have been classified into five different classes, class one residential, class two open space, class three commercial, four industrial, and five is the personal property. So just some salient facts about the revaluation, first of all, is a revaluation is done every three years in the town, it's monitored by the Department of Revenue and Certified, and we have been certified for the values for this year. With that said, what has happened to the values? And mainly, all the values increased in the town. Market is better here in the last three years. It has gradually been increasing in value. But for comparison of last year fiscal 14 or 15, what has happened? Well, the average single-family home went from 307,535 up to 340,374, which is about a 12% increase in value on the single-family home. With that said, as values increase, the tax rate would have to decrease because you're only going to collect or utilize in the budget last year's levy plus 2.5% with the growth in the town. So the decrease mainly is in the tax rate. It's going from 1558, and again, these are pending numbers, so these tax rate numbers could be within a few cents. But last year's tax rate was 1558. It would decrease this year to approximately $14.31. So what has happened to the average tax bill of a single family? It's gone from $4,791 last year to approximately $4,919 this year, which is about a $128 In this town, like most towns in Massachusetts, residential properties are escalating in value, at least on the East Coast. The commercial values though are not, they are flat to a slight percentage increase. In this town, the average commercial value, 360,184 last year, has gone up to 395,610, which is a 10% increase. Of course, this town has always had a shift of one, so there's no shift on the commercials, so they would realize the same decrease in the tax rate, if nothing changes here tonight at 1431. The average taxable for commercial is 5,612 last year. It's a slight increase to 5,661, which is a 9% increase. Personal property in the town, it actually has decreased this year. The last couple of years, Mass Electric and National Grid has been replacing wiring and their infrastructure throughout the town, and that growth was not realized this year, so the actual personal property value has decreased overall. So the good thing is the tax rate has decreased. Growth this year in the town, I realize some above-average growth, growth which was good. The growth has broken down, follows that it's going to add $179,140 to the levy, and that is, 31% of that was in residential growth, and that was above-average due to Del Rippe School being converted into apartments, so that is a good increase there. Commercial also is above-average, at 69% of the growth was in commercial, mainly the hospital being converted into this nursing facility, and also a subdivision of land from the temple to taxable apartments, although it's only a slight percent of that was completed in this year. So the growth in the town, adding the 179,140, has actually had a six-year high, and that's a good thing for Winthrop. So overall, the taxable value of the town has gone from $1,642,449,740 to about 1.8 billion, which is about a 12% increase in the total valuation of the town. The percentages of how it's divided between residential and commercial and industrial and personal properties, it's 92.99% of the town is the residential value, 7.01% is So this leads into the discussion about the rate and the shift that it could do, and I'll just say that, you know, the rate is actually the tax rate divided by that town's total value. It can then be split, you could actually remain at a factor of one, which is the uniform tax rate, or at this point, you could actually shift some of the burden off of residential or commercial, which is a very small percentage of the town. The history of the differential taxes, it has, not always, but within the last 10 years, I believe it has been a factor of one. You can shift up to 50% of the uniform rate onto the commercial. So tonight, that's a decision to be made. There are three other factors that are involved. One is a residential exemption. It has been discussed in the past in the town. What it does, it shifts 20% within that class from the lower-valued owner-occupied properties to higher-valued owner-occupied and non-owner-occupied. The exemption shifts a portion of the tax burden within the class away from the low-valued single homes onto multifamily properties, apartment buildings, and non-resident properties. So I believe it creates an unfair shift in that class. Whether then that would be a decision to adopt that or not. The open space discount does not apply to the town, there is no chapter land for farmland. The only other thing is a small commercial exemption, and again, this is a shift within that class, it's not raising any more tax dollars, it's actually shifting within the commercial class up to 10%. These properties qualify by either being owned or occupied by small businesses, and that list comes to us from the Department of Work, Wilson Development. Every single year, we have the listing of what businesses are considered small businesses in Winthrop. Again, this shifts an unfair burden from these parcels onto all the other commercial properties, and the eligibility is that that property not only be owned or occupied by a small family, a small business can be valued under a million dollars. So it's not recommended to adopt it, whereas the property owner would receive this possible tax savings, but the question would be, is he passing it on to the small business tenants in the building that he owns, he or she owns? So any questions for that?
Yes, Council Boyager.
So I guess with the, when we talk about shifting the burden, or whatever we want to call it, I guess I want to know more about why, what would be the downside of increasing the burden of non-resident owners that own property here that are receiving revenue, I'm speculating, but are getting revenue from their buildings here in town that are non-resident-owned? What is the negative? What's the downside of that?
Well, not only would they be paying a higher tax rate, but the higher-priced homes in the town would also be paying it.
Even if you only did it to the non-resident owners of buildings, you can't discriminate like that? You can't differentiate?
Yeah, if it's non-owner-occupied, and there's a threshold that you run into, look for a good calculation.
I may hear it, that's right.
Any property valued over approximately $380,000 would be actually getting the higher tax rate, because there's a point where the value will not realize the exemption, so it's only 20% can be shifted within the class, and that's going to be shifted on to non-owner-occupied and the higher-valued homes.
I see, okay. So it's not, that class is not, it's not mutually exclusive to each separate thing? It's one lumped?
One.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Council LeTteri.
Tim, you want to make a comment?
Well, I just wanted to illustrate that the smallest of shifts from residential to commercial, that's presented here, the smallest of the shifts reduces the increase in the residential tax by only $38, but increases the commercial tax by $375. So it doesn't take much, you're not really saving much, and you're putting that burden on, and you're trying to build businesses.
And putting it on to the small businesses is getting pretty hot. Alan?
The town's not making any additional funds.
Right.
The town's not making any additional funds, it's just a matter of shift.
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 Any further questions? Yes, Council of the Attorney. Oh, that's all.
We do this every year, and we talk about how small the commercial base is here. Can you, and you just said seven point oh-one percent, how does that compare to the state? I mean, I know we're way down, are we at the bottom? What's the average in the state for commercial base?
I don't have that number, but in small towns that are similar to this in size, again, they range from Elton to central Mass, where there is no commercial in a town of this size possibly, to a town like, let me just think of this size of this town. Salisbury? Salisbury? I believe that's approximately the same size. I'm not sure what their range of commercial is, but seven percent of this town is the commercial value, and if you look at this last page, even if you went to the maximum shift of one fifty, it's going to save the residential approximately fifty-eight dollars, because it's going to jack up that commercial person's tax bill by twenty-five, almost twenty-six hundred dollars a year.
Yeah, that's what we get.
That's commercial versus residential.
That was in the report of the...
But Beverly and like Hull and things were similar, and we're pretty low compared to Hull.
We're on the far left.
Hull's kind of comparable, as I would say, there's not much commercial.
Beverly is close to twenty-five.
Yeah, I'm just maintaining, we go through this here as an exercise we have to go through every year as a council. You know, we talked about some of the things we discussed with the Collins Center tonight, and small businesses, and trying to be business-friendly. I think the tax burden, if we did make the shift, wouldn't be something that we should do at this point in time. I think we should maintain a present tax revenue and the way we approach it, and revisit it as we do annually, so.
Council Count.
Yes, and I want to elaborate on that. We are trying to promote new business, and that's one of the things that we can say to them, is that we have, you know, a flat tax rate for everyone, so there's a savings in itself right there. You know, if we're going to try to change things around, then it's sort of like common productive, I think.
And I think what we've discussed every year is that it's a small advantage to the homeowner or a big disadvantage to the business owner, especially small businesses. Any further questions from the council?
I have a couple of them. First of all, everybody should realize that whenever we do a, like, reevaluation, I think it spikes up the amount of people you probably get calls from, because you went from here to here, and gets to be a little bit busier down there. And a couple of years ago, we had about two hundred and thirty people who filed for abatements. I understand it went down to about fifty or sixty, I think it was sixty-nine or sixty-eight last year, so it went way down. But that period hasn't started yet, that period doesn't start until, what date is it, like January?
The tax bills are physically...
Okay, so January first, if you see your bill and you want to question it, you have to do that. So now, just a couple of questions for you. First of all, new growth. I heard you mention that some of that new growth came from the apartments, which are not part of the temple but are their own, you know, organization. You said some of the new growth came from that. Do you know what percentage of the bill they got this year versus what they would get when they went for full occupancy?
They were only, they were only in the process of doing the foundation July first of this year, so that's about a ten, ten percent.
Okay. And so, let's go through the Del Ripple School, was it what valuation when it got into your report, and what can we expect for new growth next year?
From Del Ripple, I believe it was approximately fifty percent off the top of my head July first, whereas the hospital was around, I think, eighty percent complete.
So we pretty much, we pretty much have a little delta there, but not a substantial delta.
Yeah, you...
I'm just talking in terms of new growth, we get the bump, but...
Yeah, so going into next year, I don't know if any other developments have happened in the town, or what might be repurposed for buildings in the town, but right off the bat, you do have some growth still coming from the hospital, Del Ripple, and then this new development of the apartment building, veterans.
And one final question, can you, you put out a spreadsheet here on the back page.
Yeah.
Okay, so I can get it, this looks at the tax rate over two thirteen to fourteen to fifteen. The two fifteen residential then con-industrial, what is, is that if you shift the additional percentage up?
Yeah, so below the first three growths, is where, if you were to shift five...
Five percent. Five percent.
If you would lower that residential rate of bill, it's a hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents if it were a single rate. If you shift five percent, it would decrease down to ninety-one dollars and seventy-one cents. This is looking at the highlighted column, that's about in the middle of this spreadsheet.
So that would be about the, okay, I see.
So the bill goes down at ninety-nine, seventy-nine, but the commercial would increase to three seventy-five, oh two. So if you go down that column, you'll see how this slight savings to the residential, but because the class of commercial is so small, it's, you can't make that kind of difference. So if you, like I said, you go down to the maximum shift on the bottom of a hundred and fifty percent, it's saving the average residential about fifty-eight dollars, but it is increasing that commercial to about twenty-six hundred dollars more per year. And you just look at the makeup of the commercials in the town, restaurants, care salons, small offices, a couple of banks, there's a couple of gas stations, so there's nothing here that's, other than the hospital now, that is not contributing more and spreading out the base of the town.
So, so sorry, but the fifty-eight was what threw me off here, because my bill on this box would be forty-nine, eighteen, and if you went to one fifty, it would be forty-seven, thirty-three, which is about a hundred and eighty-dollar savings. That was, the fifty-eight was what threw me off.
Any further, yes, Council Boyager?
More not to belabor the point, but that class that had the non-residential owners of property, is that a class that's state, is that a state kind of class, or is that something we could change, like to put non-residential owners in a different, so that it would only affect them? I'm just more asking, and I'm wondering what percentage of property is non-residential-owned?
The makeup of this town is probably around eighty-nine percent owner-occupied, let's say. It's more geared to like a resort town like Barnstable, for instance, has adopted...
So it's not a very significant figure, the non-resident-owned property?
Some of the home community down there, they are shifting about to them where the, you know, the owner-occupied, lower-value properties are getting the tax rate.
Council Boncorre.
But that quote as to what the lower-value property is, importantly, you said our average property value is three forty-three and change, but then you said the higher-value property would be about three forty. How could that be?
Above the three hundred and eighty thousand is where the, where the planes...
Who says that?
It's a calculation in the town, so each town will be different depending on what the percentage of owner-occupied is. So, I mean, this is, this would be hard to implement, because first of all, you have to figure out exactly which properties are not owner-occupied.
So is it owner-occupied, or is it says non...
Through the chair, please, Council?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So is it owner-occupied, or is it non-resident, so meaning someone who doesn't live in the town that owns it, or is it someone outside the town that owns a residential property here?
It would affect both, actually. If you're over the threshold, whether it's owner-occupied or not, it would be getting the higher rate.
Really, Chairman, I think emotionally, that's the single rate tax.
Could we, could we...
The board makes that decision.
Yeah.
Could we, if there's no objection, we'll move to new business? And hearing no objection, I'd like to have a motion. First, I'll close the hearing on the fiscal fifteen tax classification. If there's no objection, I'll move to...
I did want to say one thing, I wanted to say one thing to Council Boyager. You keep bringing up the non-owner, the multifamilies or whatever, and just don't lose sight that that is also a small business for people in this town. That's income, that's retirement, that's how, some people have invested in the town, and that's their little business as well. And they're already, you know, paying more taxes, they have more fees, they don't have trash pickup, there's a lot of things that that non-owner investment property, or whatever you want to call it, they already pay into the town. So don't lose sight of that as well, okay? It's not always just, let's just pass it on to them.
No, no, I have more to...
You know, they're trying to make a limit as well.
All right, if there's no further comment on this public hearing, I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed, and I will ask if there's no objection to move to new business. Seeing, hearing no objection, I'd like to have a motion that the town maintain a uniform tax rate for all classes of property for F White fifteen, and authorize the town manager, James McKenna, to sign electronically, submit the LA five to the Department of Revenue. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Council Sanford, second of our Council Boncorre. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I am inclined to keep it the same way it is, primarily because it shifts revenue, it doesn't necessarily increase our revenue. But statistically, what would be interesting is, forget the owner-occupied or the non-owner-occupied, it would be interesting to see how the tax rate would play itself out differently if we took into consideration the classifications of two, three, four, five, and above, because, you know, I think we have, what was it, four hundred properties that were over four? You guys remember from your, from your stuff there, I know it's not a huge lot, but it'd be interesting to see how it plays out differently. Doesn't hold my vote out, but it'd just be a statistical look, see to, say, hey, what happens if you have a rate that separates at two, or three, or four, or five, and just could you have thresholds?
Actually, you cannot do that within the class by the number of units.
Oh, you can't?
Because none of that works.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Not? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. I just want to make a comment before we move on, that don't get alarmed by your increase in your assessment, that's good news, and bear in mind that the increase in everybody's assessment all over town, as Patrick said, lowers the rate. So look at what your increase in your tax bill is, and your increase in your tax bill, by the way, is good news, because it's an increase in the value of your property. If you find, as I found, that my increase is higher than the average, I'm happy about that, because it means that the value of my house has gone up higher than the average, and my investment has improved. So look at the whole picture, not just the fact that your property value went up, look at your whole bill, and then if it's, if it's up, that's good news. Mr. McKenna?
Yes, I am glad you brought that up, because I think this is good news for the community. It shows, these are real metrics that show the progress of this community. The value of the average property in the town is up now almost twelve percent from last year, and that's great. You know, when folks are investing in a new school and are investing in the infrastructure of the town, they're seeing return on that value back to themselves by an increase in value, and that's tremendous good news. The tax rate is coming down by eight percent, which, you know, is also good news, in that we're able to spread it out, and hopefully now, you know, not hit as many folks, you know, hard. We're only increasing tax by the allowable two and a half percent each year, and we're not looking for overrides of that, and, you know, the fact is that, you know, the town's folks are now appreciating more in terms of the value of their property, and I think that's a tremendous statement about the progress that we've made. I just want to thank the Board of Assessors, Alan Malusi, Paul Francisi, and Scott Consella for your service to the town, it's really, and Patrick Haring for your help through these times when we, Paul Tierney was a great asset to this community, he's gone on to the town of Arlington, but we've had Patrick come in and fill in, and you've done a great report for us, and I want to thank you too for the report.
I agree with the help of Carol.
Yeah, Carol, tremendous help. Having been, being a former assessor, I realize that, and I'm glad that Patrick's back with us, because he certainly was an asset when he was at Will Town, so thanks to Alan and Paul, to... Council?
I just was going to ask, is it, because I knew we were average, I knew, I knew we had laughed, is he a full-time? Is he on the team?
No, Patrick's a consultant for us, we are in the process of hiring a new deputy assessor.
So he stepped in and filled in?
Okay, we're all set. I want to move back to the public hearing section.
We already moved. Did we not? Did we not move?
Yes.
Nope, you did. Wake up, Council. Okay, moving back to the public hearing. We have a request, and it has been, it's in the council drop box, but I will read it unless there is, let me put it the other way, if there's no objection, I will not read it. It's, what it basically summarizes is that they would like to take the poll that's in the middle of the new parking lot, Crest Ave, and another poll that's in that area, and move them out of the bad places they are into the good places, and it just requires a council vote to grant them an easement to do it. Is there any, is there any, on the public hearing now being open, is there any question or input on the poll petition for Crest Ave and for the Crest Ave parking lot? From the public? From the council? Council Count?
Could we get from our DPDW director?
Yes.
We have been communicating with National Grid, and we finally got the easement stuff document signed. They will be removing those two polls as Mr. Gill has spoke of, there will be refeeding a new, extended floor of logs, and it's underground conduit already in place to light up the new lights that are in the parking lot.
So this is something you're in favor of, you're okay with?
Absolutely.
Okay? Is there any other question?
I had a chance to get over there the other day, and that poll's smack right in the parking lot. It's really, needs to be moved, so thank you.
Did you hear it?
Yes.
Did you hear it?
No.
So when you said smack, you didn't...
It's smack, metaphor.
Any further input or questions from the council, from the town manager, the DPDW director? If not, that hearing is closed, and we'll take that up, the vote for that up under the business. Public comment. Seeing none. Correspondence, the only correspondence I have is in regard to an interfaith service. Winter interfaith Thanksgiving observance on the 2014, Winthrop Interfaith Thanksgiving observance is being held this year at the Temple Tefarith Israel, ninety-three Veterans Road, on Sunday, November twenty-third at three P.M. Everyone is invited and welcome to gather together as a community to honor and celebrate this American holiday. In addition to Temple, to the Temple, Tefarith Israel, Catholic, Episcopal, Methodist, Baptist churches are participating. The guest speaker of the service will be Nancy Williams from the Winthrop Senior Center. Refreshments and socialization immediately follow the service. Please bring a non-perishable food item, which will be distributed to those in need by the Winthrop Food Bank. If there's any further information, call the temple at six one seven eight four six one three nine zero, or call your place of worship. This is a community event, and we hope it's seen. I have no further correspondence. Committee reports, Council vice president Delbento.
The finance committee met last night at six-thirty here in Town Hall. Called to our at six-thirty, President Ysel and Councilor Sanford, also were CFO Gordon and town manager Jim McCann. First items, our floor was the fire pump.
Craig man.
Craig man, so, sorry. Council mail also attended. The first item brought forward was the purchase lease authorization of a fire pumper, presented by Tim Gordon, and was moved forward with positive recommendation, used twenty thousand dollars to replenish the special receivership account, was also presented by Tim Gordon. The money's refunded into the general receipts, and money needs to be moved to be spent. That was also moved forward. Thirty, present with thirty-two thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars for free cash upon the MIS position, files record detention and administrative... We filed for detention and administrative work. Also presented by Tim Gordon and Jim McCann. Motion to move forward to the full council positive recommendation. The free cash distribution was presented and discussed on stabilization accounts. Those three that we had the hearing on earlier. Also moved forward with positive recommendation is an item for $3,729.47 for free cash to the EB Newton Repair Fund. Insurance money from one account to the other, so that it can be spent in general fund. And that was moved forward by the council. There's a transfer of retained earnings of $23,870 from the Waterway Fund, retained earnings funds to the Waterways Fund for pile work at the landing. That was moved forward by, with full recommendation to the full council. And the, it was a draft copy distributed to council president's fiscal sixteen goals. There was late discussion on it, and we'll probably bring that up later tonight.
Thank you, Councilor. Meeting adjourned seven minutes. Council Mail, DPDW.
Thank you. The DPW, oops, sorry. The DPDW met on Tuesday, October 21st, 2014, at 6:11. There was Council President Gill, Councilor Calla, Delvento, Barone, and DPDW Director, Steve Calla. We talked about the new project, we talked about the cost of adding the sidewalks on and everything that would go into that. We also spoke about the fact that Point Shirley has moved ahead up on the path. I think at one point at our last meeting, we had felt that that wasn't going to go through, and now we feel that it's going to be included, so we're going to be using some of the funds. I think we've already put 175 thou, oh, we have 200,000 for that, or 175,000 for that?
We'll need to use 200,000 of the Chapter 9.
Chapter 9. Okay.
As well as 200,000 of Chapter 9. Looks like whole project potentially going to happen this coming fiscal year, Contract Four, yeah, that year.
Okay, so, we did, we did speak about Contract Four, which is the Water Tower Hill and the Francis Street Project. Francis Street Project has the exposed water pipe, and the hill has quite a bit of work going on on it right now, if you've been up there. And we also had a discussion on the winter, the way we stood ready for the winter, and it appears that we were suggesting that we could use a couple of new trucks, but I think that those are already in the budget far this year. And we had a motion to adjourn at 6:41.
Thank you, Councilor.
And I actually submitted those meeting minutes, so they're there.
Capital Assets Committee, Councilor.
Thank you. Capital Assets Subcommittee met on Thursday, November 13th. The meeting was called, the first floor meeting room at Town Hall. Meeting was called to order at 7:08 PM. Present were the committee members, myself, Councilors Calla and Sanford. Also present was Council President, also present was Council President Gill, Councilor Mail, Town Manager McKenna, and our CFO, Tim Gordon. The agenda was discussion of Town Manager supplemental to the FY15 capital improvement plan. Discussion was had over various items listed in the plan, with some being completed or in the works. Also, discussion followed with additions to the plan. There was discussion concerning funding of the items. Some of the items to include was the work on the cupola, the records room construction, Coughlin Park Playground, replacement of two utility trucks for the DPDW window replacement program at, over at Police Department, town records scanning project, EB Newton roofing and masonry repairs, disaster recovery equipment software, installation of emergency battery backups, enclosure between the high school gym and rink, 20 new voting booths and a vault storage container. Motion by, was made by Council Calla to accept the supplemental items, and these motions will, seconded by Councilor Sanford, voted on unanimously, and these motions will be under new business.
Thank you, Councilor. Mr. McKenna, town manager's report?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. I have a brief report. Pleased to introduce to the council and to the community the first of its kind, Town of Winter Business Permit Handbook. I have to thank my staff, particularly Tangi Safuni, Al Lahey, and the clerk's office for helping out with the compilation of this business permit handbook. The idea was born out of a conversation we had at the Chamber Executive Board meeting roughly six months ago, and clearly, there was expressed a desire to try as we might to make our, the process of obtaining permits in the town to open businesses more clear and streamlined. And so, we went, set about doing that, and I hope we've accomplished the goal. What we have done in the booklet is to provide a basic roadmap that one would follow if they're looking to open a retail business or restaurant of that nature, food service business in town, and how they, where they would go first, who they would need to speak to, how they would get their information, and hopefully continue to get some guidance in the process. We have put into the book all of the necessary permits one would possibly have to get. I know that it's, it's fairly thick and sizable, but, you know, not all permits fit all purposes. Not all shoes fit the same feet, as it were. There are samples of documents in here that may or may not apply to any particular business, but we thought we'd include them all, just to put them all under wraps under one, in one booklet. So, you know, hopefully, the town, you know, folks will recognize that, you know, Winter's government is not, is supportive of business. Let me use the positive statement. We support the creation of small business and encourage folks and entrepreneurs to come to the town to open businesses and to thrive. And we hope that this handbook will help them, you know, navigate the pathway to success in, in, in doing that. I don't know of any other community that has this. So, you know, perhaps they do, perhaps they do it differently in other communities. But for us, we felt this was a great way to encourage small business creation and to streamline the process, and I hope we've done that.
Great document, great, move forward, Councilor.
If I may, again, thank you. This is, you know, another piece of the Bible, which I'm going to accomplish with local businesses, encourage people to come in. It's a great document, again, it was, it was collaboration with the building department, thanks to Al and thanks to the town manager. And to, again, not to get back to Winter Chamber, but this is something they've suggested for a long time. Thanks for following through with it, Jim.
Appreciate it.
Makes a big difference.
Vice President Delvento.
And one other thing, it's also, it's, you know, maybe it looks like it's geared towards the business community, but it's geared to everybody. It's on the website, it's down, it's downloadable, at least you can look at it, and every application possible that I could think of, except for dog licenses, one is in here, for Christmas tree sales, for demolition of buildings, but even your regular town permits, your electrical, your electrical permit, your plumbing permit, there's a checklist for all your, for all work that you want to do on a residence also, so it's, it's all there, the checklist that go along with it, even for the residential work. So, maybe a lot of people's concerns are probably, if they just go look at it, it's online, I pulled it up, it's fairly easy, and you'll see what you need before you start chasing around if you just want to fix your roof or something.
Yes, Councilor?
Yeah, this is incredible. Like, I guess I had a question was, and it may have already been done, has this been vetted, this through maybe through Council Sanford maybe taking it to the chamber to have them look through it to maybe make suggestions or any changes, or maybe even through some of the major developers in town to kind of, just to get their opinions on things from the other side?
You know, we're happy to. By no means is this set in stone.
Sure.
This can be an evolving document.
No, it's incredible.
The binding comes off. We can change this as we go along. This is our first crack at putting this together. I suspect if anyone has better ways to go about doing this or improvements to this, by all means, we'd love to hear those suggestions and have that input, so.
Thank you. Yes, it's a great, great package. Anyone else from the council? Okay, Mr. McKenna?
We were on that point. I know that the committee, the, that I visited, I don't know which one meeting this week, Finance? Finance, had suggested a fee for the book. And so, if, if, if that's appropriate, that would be the motion from the council. We, we'd established a, basically a $20 value to the book. We don't give them out, you know, there's a lot of effort that goes into putting these together. So, I think it is appropriate that the council set a fee for the book, so that we, we can have the value there for it.
It's the cost of the year, right?
Yeah.
Is it printing, or is it for downloading as well?
It's, it, no, downloading is fine, but it, for us to produce a document, it would take, it would require, you know, an expenditure of time and expense, and we would put a value of $20 on that.
If there's no objection, we'll move to new business and vote the fee. If there's no objection, we have a motion to establish a fee for the business permit handbook of $20. Motion by Council Vice President Delvento, seconded by Councilor Boncorry. Any discussion on the motion, Councilor?
So, does it cost $20 in paper to do it?
It's a, it's, we figure it's about, you know, the correlation, there are some colored aspects to it, you know? We thought that that was about a value of about $10, and then time it takes to put it together.
I, I just think that, you know, it's a great thing, and it's probably worth a little bit more than $20. We're selling ourselves a little short. And someone comes in and they have it all there, that's a tremendous amount of research, and we should get a fair value for it, and they should have the option of being able to log on and getting it, but if they log on and get it, it should be all live forms, and we should charge for that. This is, this is a huge savings for people, in my mind, coming in and having one place. They don't need an attorney. You know, they, you know, there's more, there's the value of the paper.
They don't need attorneys.
What I'm saying is that they, this is, this is a quick, this is a quick, you know, concise place. They don't need to pay somebody to come in and find out this, and this, and this. And, and if you didn't get a chance to look through it, there's a flow chart, so if somebody walks in off the street and they say, okay, here I go, and there's where I can get to, and I think you have a little more value in it than 1995.
You know, I, I would, in response to that...
Any further discussion, Mr. McKenna? Response?
You know, I am looking to encourage business development in the town. I certainly think that there's more, you know, capital that's been invested in this, yours truly. I, I've put a lot of effort into it. I put together the processes with, and my assistant, Tangi, put a lot into it. This has been developed over a period of, you know, six months of thought and process. But, our goal here is to see more businesses be created.
Exactly.
And not have a disincentive. So, what I defer to you, the council, to whatever you want to put as a value, we, I threw in my free legal assistance as a matter of, of contribution to the effort. I think that this, you know, this, this will hopefully encourage business development, and, and that, I, I hope is something that folks will, you know, we don't, we just don't want to give it out for, for free, because of obviously the expense it takes to put it together.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Council Letyry has moved the question. Moving the question has been seconded. All those in favor of moving the question, say aye. Opposed, unanimous? On the motion that the fee be established for $20 for the business permit handbook. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, unanimous?
You come into business, you come into town to open up a business, you don't want to spend $20.
Craig, you win one bell. We got the TV there, one.
We're putting our votes up there now.
Mr. McKenna?
I wish all news was good news, but for, we did get some indication that, that there's a, a budget gap at the state level that's being discussed. And I just want to give the council a little bit of warning, that we, we certainly expect to hear something from the governor with respect to 9C cuts. We don't know what scale, size, dimension, that may or may not come in, in the form of. We don't know if it'll hit local aid, but we're being very watchful of, of what the discourse is on Beacon Hill about this. And stay tuned. I don't have anything to report specifically for, for terms of local aid, but certainly we're being mindful that this discussion is being had on Beacon Hill. And just to have, defer to the CFO on the fact that the auditors are in auditing our books for the closing fiscal year FY15. Tim?
Yeah, and they're into their second week, plugging along, keeping us busy, and they should be finishing on Thursday. So far, so good.
There were unofficial report, our custody, we were just talking, and they're very, very, very impressed with the progress that the town of Winter has made over the last three or four years, and they, the, the response to the suggestions that came out on the previous, and they're very impressed with what progress and also the cooperation of the staff that they're working with.
Can I just ask a question? So, so I didn't know what 9C cuts were, so I looked them up, and it said, and maybe it's been updated, but it says, "The governor cannot use 9C authority to cut local aid, courts, legislature, or other constitutional offices."
Without seeking legislative authority. He can't do it unilaterally, but he has to have a conversation and get a hold of the legislature to, to make cuts on local aid. That's where the conversation is.
All right, I, I just wasn't...
One of the things that I, if I remember from the last time we had to go through this ordeal, there are great, things like grants can be reused, and other, other sources of funding outside of local aid can be impacted, which is, with, with authority, so.
Any further questions or comments to the manager? If not, the town manager's report is complete. Mr. Council Vice President Delvento has a motion. And to 15 minute recess, 10 minute recess? 10's good. 10 minute? All right, we're at, Council Boncorry wants a 7 minute recess. We'll aim for 7 minutes to be back at 9:00. Thank you. Moving on to the agenda, we have a new item that we voted last week. We will have the school department update at each meeting, and last night was a very, very active school committee meeting, but I'm going to go through the items as quickly as I can. Beginning of the meeting last night was student awards. There was 34 students received the Abigail Adams Scholarship Award. That provides for free tuition to a state school. It's a little misleading, because the tuition is about $200, and the fees are up in the thousands, but it's the tuition that the students, that they are awarded the scholarship for. The MCAS award, num, issue, which is a big issue everywhere, we saw 20 students get perfect MCAS scores, 280, and many of them were multiple recipients, they had received it more than one year. In memory of Tanker, Tom Tanker Donovan, his sister Christine presented the school with a $5,000 check to be used toward student activity fees. The money was raised by a golf tournament run by Sean Watson down at the, at the local golf club, and Christine and Sean committed to this being an annual, an annual affair and annual contribution. Superintendent and the school committee expressed a great appreciation to the council for the vote last week of the, for the Chromebooks, and they were very impressed by the fact that it came up for a discussion, was moved to a motion, and was voted. There was a great appreciation to Council Letyry for his leadership in that, and to the rest of the council for following through and putting that into place, as well as Mrs. Letyry and Mr. Harity, who were here in, in favor, or in presentation of the, of the article. They discussed the What's the Buzz newsletter that the Life Skills Class puts out. It's a great letter that the kids write, Mrs. Boyagian's class writes a newsletter every month, and it's published to the school committee and to a whole series of people, and they have said if anybody else would like to be on the What's the Buzz newsletter, feel free to contact Mrs. Boyagian, she and Mrs. Benevento put the, the publication out monthly. Athletics, good, great news for the athletics, as well as the academics that we just talked about. The football team just went nine games undefeated. The football team just went nine games undefeated, and then they had a playoff last week where they showed very well, but Linfield was the winner of that game, and they commended, and I commend the players and Coach Driscoll for a great season. The Lady Viking Soccer is in the non-finals on their accomplishments, and a congrats to those girls and to Coach Martucci. Cheerleaders placed second place in a regional contest. Cheerleaders placed second place in the regional contest. Then I'm moving on to the state. Powderpuff Game is on Sunday, this week, the 23rd, and Thanksgiving Day is at home. The Drama Club, the Drama Department is producing a Willie and the Hairy Man on Friday and Saturday of this week, and then on Friday and Saturday of, I don't have the exact date. I think it's the first Friday, first Friday and Saturday in December. Yes, it is. They're doing It's a Wonderful Life. We're all familiar with that play. National Honor Society induction was tonight at 6 o'clock. The Facella Foundation, who has left a significant amount of money, their trustees and their foundation are meeting to determine how the monies are going to be distributed. The New Middle High School is on schedule and it's on budget. The foundation work will be completed by the end of this month. This has driven by, you see, the concrete has been poured and is still in the process. On budget and to be completed by the end of this month. Through the rest of the winter and completed by the end of March will be all the steel frame. So they feel that they're really moving along quite well with that, with that project. Very interesting presentation by Mia Semenetti and Annie Mahoney, two seniors who are doing a fundraiser for Nicaragua. They've been to Nicaragua and have met with the kids down there, and really, really had a great presentation. I won't get into the detail because it was, it was a long meeting, but there was so much, so much good academic, drama, athletic, and the high school update and this Nicaragua trip, it was a really, really impressive meeting. Thank you for the opportunity to have that on the agenda.
Peter, any word on whether Gil Bane has had a job fair? How many works of people they have working on this project, but they had promised they would go to...
I don't, but Jim, have you read anything on that?
No.
Council Luteri being on the...
No, I have not either, but it will, we have a meeting this Thursday night.
Can you check that out?
Ask again, you bring it up and see what they're doing because that was...
Yep.
...the day it promised.
Yep, okay. Any other questions on the school? Moving on to all business, Council Vice President.
Okay, now, take these a little out of order from the post agenda, but I'm gonna take them in the order that they're, the copies are placed. From the Finance Committee, move that the town council transfer $20,000 for free cash to replenish special article 0196052588057, FY14 receivership divulgated property. Take any other action relative thereto.
Coming from, you positive recommendation?
Yes.
Coming from committee, no second required, is there any discussion on the motion? Not? All those in favor to say aye. Aye, opposed, unanimous. Councilor?
Move that the town council authorize a 7-year lease purchase of a 1,250 gallon per minute pumping fire engine. Total amount authorized for this equipment is $533,000. Take any other action relative thereto.
Positive recommendation?
Yes.
Coming from committee, no need for second. Any discussion? Not? All those in favor to say aye. Aye, opposed, unanimous. Councilor?
From committee, move that the town council transfer $30,216 for free cash to supplement the MIS budget personnel line 01155551511100. Take any action relative thereto.
From committee, no second required. All those in favor to say aye. Aye, opposed, unanimous.
From committee, move that the town council transfer $676,534 for free cash to fund 932 stabilization fund. Take any action relative thereto.
From committee, no second required. Any discussion on the motion? Not? All those in favor to say aye. Aye, opposed, unanimous.
From committee, to move that the town council transfer $977,046 from free cash to fund 964 capital stabilization fund for purpose of funding the town's capital improvement needs. Take any action relative thereto.
Coming from committee, no second required. Any special motion?
Yes, just a point, something that I was looking at. In June, we had $2,255,000 in free cash. We approve all of these free cashings that are on the agenda tonight. Both in all of new business, we're going to be down to $119,000 in free cash. Is that correct?
$310,000.
$310,000, if we approve the other stuff that's on new business as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
This guy's gonna be enough to get us through the rest of the year.
Well, it can always come back. I'm sorry. It can always come back up.
And we also still have, so we have that $310,000 in the town council reserve that has $119,000.
$119,000, okay. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor to say aye. Aye, opposed, unanimous. Thank you.
From committee, move that the town council transfer $150,000 for free cash to buildings, maintenance, stabilization fund for purpose of funding extraordinary effezing, town facility maintenance expenditures, or take any action relative thereto.
Any discussion on the motion? Not? All those in favor to say aye. Aye, opposed, unanimous.
Move that the town council transfer $3,729.46 from free cash to EB roof repairs account 7245524001 for purpose of funding roof repairs due to strong damage, or take any other action relative thereto.
Coming from committee, no second required. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor to say aye. Aye, opposed, unanimous.
From committee, move that the town council transfer $23,870 from the Waterways Enterprise Fund Retained Earnings Fund, 752 to the Waterways Enterprise Fund account 752544350, contract services to fund marine piles, to repair marine piles, or take any other action relative thereto.
Coming from committee, no second required. Any discussion on the motion? Not? All those in favor to say aye. Aye, opposed, unanimous. Is that all? Council Budget Goals? On the...
Council Budget Goals?
Yes. Can I have that motion?
I think it's a...
If you would, I thought I had it in front of me. Well, I'll just make a motion that we, council commit, submit the council budget goals. Did it come out of committee with a recommendation?
It did not come out with a recommendation.
Okay. I'll make them, I'll ask for motion that the council budget goals, as submitted to the Finance Committee, be forwarded to the town manager per Section 2C, 72C of the charter. I'll make that motion. Motion by Vice President Devento, seconded by Councilor Luteri. Any discussion on the motion? Not? All those in favor to say aye.
Hold on. So that's something that just went, did that go to the entire council?
Yeah, it was, it was sent out, I believe. I believe it was sent out last week and everybody got it. And then it was on the agenda for the Finance Committee this week. Any further discussion?
No.
No?
Just as a, just a point of information, did everybody get that?
If it didn't go out, I'll take the rap. I thought I sent that out.
Yeah, I didn't get it either. I don't remember getting it.
I have, you know.
What day?
I don't know. I don't have the record in front of me. I tried to...
I gotta rub the temp on mine.
Yeah. I'm a loser.
It was referred, I believe, was it referred out to the Finance Committee?
Was referred out to Finance, and the Finance met on it last week. And I thought, I know I sent it to Finance, I thought I had sent it to the whole council. Maybe I didn't. If not, it's the first time on the agenda. If somebody wants to postpone it to the next meeting?
What was it?
If not, the...
You know something? It probably should.
Yeah, let, can we get a copy?
Yep, the motion, who wants to exercise his right?
I would go ahead.
Okay. Councilor May? No. Okay, Councilor Mayo has exercised his right, because you were the one that brought it up. And we will refer to the next meeting. On the poll petition, as it was presented tonight, all those in favor of granting the poll petition to, could I please have a motion to grant the poll petition? Motion by Councilor Luteri, seconded by Councilor Boyajian. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor to say aye. Aye, opposed, unanimous. Thank you. The tax classification, we should have been on the new business, we've already done it anyways. We have a series of motions for transfers. And Councilor Luteri is making a motion that we refer the whole group of those to Finance.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Von Corry. Any discussion on the motion? That's, that whole series of transfers that are on the agenda. If not, all those in favor of referring? That series of motions?
Oh, excuse me.
Hold on. Question?
Are those the ones that we already... No, the new business.
All right, I'm sorry. So those are, those are motions that we haven't discussed as yet? Is there any discussion on the motion as to...
To refer them to Finance. Refer them all to Finance?
Hold on. Through the chair. The chair is asking, is there any discussion on the motion to refer those transfers to Finance for action at the next council meeting? If there's no discussion on that, I will take a vote to transfer that series of motions to Finance. All those in favor to say aye. Aye, opposed, unanimous. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is for the town manager's contract extension, and I'm going to ask that we hold that item until after executive session and at this point move to public comment.
Just a point of clarification, from last meeting, when we voted the Chromebooks, the minutes don't reflect a source of funds for those Chromebooks. And I just want to ask for an amount. And we're going through those minutes now, and it's important that we have a record of the source and amount for that vote. Do you recall if the motion included a source?
It did include a source.
Right.
I think it said free cash, but I'm not sure.
These were just approved tonight?
No, last week.
We voted on last week. That we did last week for the Chromebooks.
Okay, then why should have, if it's on the motion, it should be in the minutes?
The motion wasn't in the agenda packet.
No, it wasn't.
And I just don't have any eyes on that motion because I wasn't here at that last meeting.
It was free cash. If you want us to, if you want it to be revoked, is that...
I just need to know the amount.
Okay, man, the minutes.
The amount was, it's not in the minutes, the amount is not in the...
Oh, the amount isn't in the...
Or the source. So we need... Free cash, and the amount was 98.74 per cot, so it's 19,748.
Do you want an affirmative vote that it's the 19,000?
If we could indulge you for that, that'd be, yeah.
If we were just, Councilor Luteri is making a motion for affirmation of the vote of...
Well, I would make the motion for 20,000 because it won't exceed, and I'm not sure exactly. I think it's 19,748, but a motion for 20,000.
Councilor Luteri is making a motion for, we have to do 19,920.
So it's not 20,000.
No, no. You're okay.
Okay, so a motion of $20,000 from free cash, or affirming a motion from the previous meeting. Motion by Councilor Luteri, seconded by Councilor Devento. Any discussion on that motion? This is to clarify the amount and the source.
So my question should not be going right? Is that okay?
Why not?
Anybody who wasn't here at the last meeting...
Right, anybody who was not here at the last meeting should not be voting.
Linda, it's me, Craig.
So all those in favor's...
Just for, to clarify, not, I make the amendment, not to exceed 20,000?
Right.
Is that, that the way?
Well, that's why I think it's 19,748, but in case I'm off a dollar, I don't want to not have enough.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay, so with the amount, do you want to make an amendment, or do you want to just have that as your motion?
Well, not to exceed 20,000.
Not to exceed 20,000, coming from free cash.
Yes.
All, any other further discussion? Not? All those in favor to say aye. Aye, opposed, oh, sorry.
No, it's just, I just want to make sure that that's clear on the minutes for the next meeting, because we're gonna need to have that. And then, and then, just to, the dollar value I quoted earlier on the free cash balance comes down to 290,000.
Okay. So we had two extensions, unanimous, except for the two exceptions. Public comment? Hearing none.
Wait, wait, wait. Council President?
Sorry.
I just want to say, I want to extend my thanks to the town manager and CFO for all the effort that was put into the capital plan. Lot of thought, lot of work. Thank you very much.
That's wonderful.
Good job.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Councilor Mayo.
So, one, I, I got an email about a school building committee, but it's not on the calendar for Thursday night. Because I checked my calendar before I came here, and I just checked it again, and I don't see it, and maybe I'm missing it. It shouldn't be on the town calendar, not on the school calendar, correct? It always was before, I didn't see it, so. Next, I want to invite all of you people on Sunday to the Town Interfaith at the temple. It's always a nice little affair, and it's nice if everybody shows up. It's 3 o'clock, it has all the different churches around town coming and now offering something. So I want to, I want to say that. I also forgot, I had, we, I found, the two people did very, very nice jobs with their flower pots this year in front of the house. So I have the two people. One is the Griffin family up in, on the corner of, well, I won't say where they live, but I'll bring the picture down. And then next, there's a, there's a woman a couple of doors up from you that did a slam bang job, and she's the, she's winner too, so you have to give me their name, then I didn't want to, do you know who it is?
No, but there was another one on Pearl and...
Third, I didn't get, I, I, you know, I tried to find the best of them. They'll have to enter next year, what can I tell you? And, one, the paper isn't here, but I, I did want to thank them for the very nice, kind words they said about my mother, who passed away a couple of weeks ago. And I also want to express my thanks to the, to the first responders who showed up. They were very kind and compassionate, and I'm sure other people have seen that. I never had the opportunity to experience that, and it was very kind thought and gesture. They were all very, very nice, and I, I didn't want that to go on behalf of myself and my family. And I also, it's Thanksgiving, and it is one of my favorite times of year, and I'm not going to allow this moment to pass by without saying thanks to everybody, because I, I, I think we had a very, very good year as a group, and as a community, and as a town, and the administrative, and the executive, and legislative, and all the work for all the people in town, and Mike for all of his work, so I want to say thank you. It's a great privilege to serve with everybody. And next year, I'm going to be able to sit here and say thanks because we'll have Cruise Director on board.
And a ferry.
And a ferry, and it'll be even a better year. So I just wanted to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving to you and your families and the whole world. And I hope to see anybody that would like to on Sunday afternoon.
Ditto, same to you.
Any others? Thank you.
I guess I'll extend, Mr. Gill, I know that you got a invitation to the, my wife's life skills class with the double Bs are putting on a Thanksgiving on, I think it's Tuesday, but if anyone's interested, I'll try and get a copy of it, and you're all invited to come and see the life skills class as well as everyone else to their Thanksgiving dinner on Tuesday.
Noontime Tuesday? Yep. Where? It's, uh... Noon 12 or 15 at the high school?
At the high school, yeah. Cooking the Thanksgiving dinner, and as my wife says, she's cooking Tuesday and Thursday stuff.
Oh, you're not cooking?
I'm not allowed.
And the kids are cooking too, so...
Yes, the kids are, the kids are cooking, yes.
Council, as said on the agenda, anticipates going into executive session to discuss the town manager's contract, and I would like to have a motion to go into executive session. Motion by Councilor Luteri, seconded by...
Second.
Councilor? We are, it's okay. The chair declares that discussion of this matter in open session could have a detrimental effect on the negotiation of the extension of the town manager's contract. But I have a roll call for executive session.
Council Calla. Council Sanford.
Yeah.
Council Paul Corey?
Yes, I say we should go in.
Council Luteri.
Yes.
Council Boyajin.
Yes.
Council Geron.
Yes.
Council Mail?
Yes.
Vice President Delvento.
Yes.
President Gill?
Yes. Business. And I'd like a motion to extend the town manager's contract effective July 1, 2015 to June 30, 2018 at an annual base salary of $148,000 effective July 1, 2015. An annual increase is based upon performance incentives per Section 12 of his present contract. And the dates of his, of his present contract will be adjusted. Otherwise, otherwise it will stay the same. Except the Carol Lawrence will be removed. Motion by Councilor Luteri, seconded by Councilor Sanford. Any discussion on the motion? Not? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, unanimous. Thank you, Mr. McKenna. We appreciate your, um, dedication. Formance to our community.